Good evening and welcome to the Monday, November 20, 2023 Winchester Select Board meeting. My name is Rich Muucci. I'm the Chair of the Winchester Select Board. With me this evening is Vice Chair Anthea Brereton. And today we're going to be discussing the new draft of the Winchester Select Board.
We are?
Mm-hmm.
Great. Good evening and welcome to the Monday, November 20th, 2023 Winchester Select Board meeting. My name is Rich Mucci. I'm the Chair of the Winchester Select Board. With me this evening is Vice Chair Anthea Brady, Members John Fallon, Michelle Pryor, Michael Beckcourt, and Town Manager Beth Rudolph. We have a lot on the agenda, so we're gonna try to keep things moving today. I'm going to start with our acceptance of donations.
Move that we accept with gratitude a state formula grant funding of $75,572 from the Executive Office of Elder Affairs to the Council of Unaging for services and programs for Winchester's older residents.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any one oppose? Passes? We're gonna jump around a little bit, try to keep people, get people out of here. I know it's holiday week. Can you start with committee and commission appointments? Is William McPatten here?
Yes.
Come on up.
This looks so much smaller on camera. Excellent. Thank you for having me this evening.
So you are interviewing to be on the Wildwood Cemetery Advisory Committee.
Yes, I am.
All right. Why don't you tell us a little bit about yourself and why you want to serve?
Sure. So, and I go by Bill McPatten. So I've been a resident now in Winchester for 25 years, lovely wife Andrea, have one child through the school system, and hoping to move the second one through this coming May. And have done all of the typical things you would expect in town. I was a soccer coach, I was a softball coach, I played neither. But more so retired recently. And find myself being in a community that I love, and I want to volunteer and help out as much as I can. I am a town meeting member, I'm Precinct Seven. I've worked with the town clerk on the town elections, which is a good way to meet lots of people in town as well. When I retired, I actually retired early, and it was very intentional, to actually live my life and have more to do with, with community. What brought me, what was very interesting about the Wildwood Cemetery Association is this is what got me through high school and college. It actually paid for the University of Massachusetts, so I was very happy about that. I first looked at it as a paycheck, but I came to understand the importance of it in a community, what it meant. It's sure, it's a final resting place, but there are many other things it is. It's a jewel of a space, I believe, in the town of Winchester, it's 75 acres. I mean, people run, they jog, kids learn how to ride their bikes, there are veterans that, you know, have flags and are recognized at the graves. You know, I believe that, you know, planning for these things, this is gonna be here a lot longer than we're ever gonna be here, and that if we plan well and think about it long-term, we can pass it on to the next generations going forward.
Great. Well, thank you for that introduction. Anyone have any questions for Bill?
No. Loved your application, very thorough, thoughtful, appreciate it.
Thank you. I tried to follow the Mark Twain in reverse and do it short and simple.
I appreciate your interest. I know you're from town meeting, so thanks for wanting to step up and do a little more in town.
Great, thank you.
All right. Hearing no further discussion or questions. Does anyone want to make a motion?
Move that we appoint William McPatten to the Wildwood Cemetery Advisory Committee for the term to expire May 31st, 2025.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. Bill, it's unanimous.
Thank you very much.
For your service to the town. Best of luck. Happy Thanksgiving. You're all set.
Excellent. Look forward to seeing you all in the future.
Thanks, Bill.
Next up, we have two appointments to the Wright Lock Farm Conservancy Board. Is David Jolson here?
Yeah, right here.
Great. How are you?
Good. How are you?
Do you want to, will you have your application? Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
If you want to just introduce yourself and explain why you're interested in serving the board?
Sure. Sure. I've been a town meeting member for, since my daughter was in third grade, so I don't know how many years, 20 years or so. Also served on the Energy Management Committee for about nine years when it was first formed with Woody Wood and Bill Swanton. I have been a member of the environmental group Sustainable Winchester for many years. And now I've been paying attention to the farm and want to get involved with the farm and help it grow. I've been amazed at how it's grown over time and gone from a raspberry farm to all the different programs that they offer.
Any questions for David?
I assume they've told you about their meetings and all that stuff?
Yes, once a month. It's a little less than town meeting.
Certainly run shorter.
Yep.
Great.
I've been to a couple already to observe, so.
Okay.
Yeah, I think Dave's experience in the Energy Management Committee is, you know, really helpful for the farm as well, because I know that's something the farm is really trying to, you know, get a hold of as well, is ongoing expenses and creative ways to do it. And your specialty in solar is also something that I think that would really benefit. But thank you for, for being interested, so I could heal for the position.
Great. Anyone else? All right. So you want to make a motion?
Move that we appoint David Jodelson to the Wright Lock Farm Conservancy Board for the term to expire October 31st, 2025.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. Congratulations, Dave. Thank you for your service.
I appreciate it.
Thanks, Dave.
See ya.
And Susan McPhee, she's not here, right?
I'll see her.
So she is looking to be reappointed for a term to expire October 31st, 2026. Does anyone have an issue reappointing her?
She's the current Vice President of the Board of Directors, and she's been on the board since, I want to say 2017. So this might be her last term, but no, no issues in keeping her in there with some, with Archie having recently retired and a new director in. There's a new board chair, we could keep some continuity in that seat for sure.
Anyone else? Someone want to make a motion?
Move that we reappoint Susan McPhee to the Wright Lock Farm Conservancy Board for the term to expire October 31st, 2026.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. Keeping it going, we have an Eagle Scout here. If you want to come on up, Tim? Come on up.
I have a lot of questions, so I hope you're ready, my friend.
He's got a presentation.
Yes.
Oh, man.
I'll keep it short.
So we've, we had some information in our packet, so thank you for submitting that.
Yes.
And feel free to, you know.
Before I begin, I do have some, I do have a copy of this information packet that I am unfortunately required to give you, so if you would like to take a look at these.
Thank you. Okay, can it's all yours?
I think I just need, oh.
We'll take one and pass the other. Okay?
Is this a microphone? That's a microphone.
Yeah, that's for TV, so they can hear you.
All right. Good evening. My name is Tim Hamilton, and I'm a scout in Troop 503 here in Winchester. Thank you for fitting me into your schedule. I know it's busy, so I'll try to be quick. Currently working towards the Eagle Scout rank, and part of that is a service project, which I'm here tonight to present to you and hopefully gain a signature of approval. So my project will take place at Denet Park, which is off of the Edge of the Fowls, off of Denet Circle. In the beginning stages of planning, I was aware of some neighborhood controversy surrounding street signs. So before I, so in the early stages of my planning, I went around to the residents in the neighborhood and went door to door and spoke to them about my project, and most of them were enthusiastic about the idea of it. So the park is the site of an entrance to the Fowls Reservation, which you can barely see in that photo there. It's littered with trash, and it's surrounded by a lot of invasive species. In the first part of my project, I plan to pick up all the trash at the park and remove the species near the entrance in the tree line. The, the main focus of my project, oh, I'm sorry, hold on, this is, that's just the closer up of the Fowls entrance and on the right are some of the plants I plan to remove. The main focus of my project is this old baseball backstop, as you can see to the left. It's overgrown and it's underutilized. I plan to clear the backstop of weeds and use it as part of a new small Wolfball diamond. This diamond will be just be, it'll just be four in-ground wooden bases as to not interfere with the town's mowing of the grass. The bases will be distance apart according to Wolfball regulation, so about 30 feet. I have measured the backstop, measured from the backstop where these bases will be placed, and they're not in the way of any trees or foliage. My goal with this project is to provide a safe space for the neighborhood kids to play and to stay off the street, and to clean up the park so that the walkers and parkgoers can use this space without worry of any litter or potentially harmful plants nearby. Pending your approval, the project will be completed this Sunday, the 26th, and I fully expect people to complete it in one day. So that's the summary of my project. Can I answer any questions?
That's great.
So Beth, is this a park that we maintain?
I believe DPW does mow it, yes.
Other questions?
Any other questions?
Do you have a small army to help you?
Exactly. I do.
You have an aggressive timeline.
I chose this park because it's so close to my home. I can, I can see it from my house, so it, I've always wanted to be able to do something there.
Cool.
It's like making a real-life Sam林. Kids to play.
Dreams.
Yes.
Hope there's no big dogs over there.
We can all go play sometime, you know. Select Board versus Planning Board.
Doing the Board of Assessors?
Race buddy. I think it's great.
Well, that's great. Thank you, Tim.
Yeah.
And congratulations on this path towards Eagle Scout. It's very difficult, challenging.
Thank you.
Path that takes several years to do, and, you know, congratulations on all of your hard work, and I hope you are successful in reaching the rank. So if there's no other questions, we just need to approve the work, right?
I do need a signature. I don't know who would like to sign in, or who would sign in.
Rich would love to.
Should bring it to you now or wait?
Let's take your vote first and then.
Move that we approve the Eagle Scout project for Denet Park.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. Passes unanimously. Hope the weather works out for you Sunday.
Thank you. Sorry. This, just the last page of this. Right there.
Do you want to say yes?
Yep. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you. Good luck.
Good luck.
Thanks, Tim. Good job.
All right. Let's go back up, and at this point, I will hear from the town manager.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So a few updates this evening on items not on your agenda. First up, the transfer station is continuing their fall leaf collection, so there's one more Sunday left, Sunday, November 26th, where the transfer station will be open from noon to 4:00 PM for leaf collection only. Also, this time of year, we start enforcing the town's all-night parking ban, so the police department will be out placing warning on vehicles over the next few weeks. Just a reminder that the town does have an all-night parking ban, and we do enforce it over the winter. And certainly, once we do have snow emergencies, vehicles left on this, on the street, maybe taken out or towed. Also, there's a variety of holiday events coming up in the town center, put on by our Chamber of Commerce. So first up, there's a, a week from tonight, there's a midnight manna shopping event in the town center from 5:00 to 9:00 PM. On Friday, December 1st, will be the tree lighting ceremony in the town common at 7:00 PM with a performance by the All School Chorus. On Saturday, December 2nd, there'll be a dog show at noon on the 12, on the town common. And then on Sunday, December 3rd, there'll be drive-by visits with Santa behind the McCall School at 6:00 PM.
Dog show. Is that new? First time?
Second time. Third time.
Our town clerk here this evening, just wanted to let everybody know that she is looking for folks to help with the 2024 election cycle, which is a very busy election cycle, so there's lots of information up on the town website, or you're welcome to reach out to the town clerk's office. And then just a few brief construction updates. So we're trying to wrap things up for the season. Ever Source is continuing their work on Cross Street to wrap everything up there for this fall, to remove the bypass pumping and to pave the road as best they can over the winter season. They'll be back in the spring to do final restoration. Lake Street Bridge project is coming to a close, so are happy to report that the precast sections of the bridge were delivered on, early this month, and we should have paving, hopefully, tomorrow, fingers crossed. So we're hoping that the road will be reopened for Thanksgiving. There will be construction that will need to continue beyond that, so we may have some days where we're down to one lane during the workday, but it will be fully open at the end of the workday. Woodside Road winter pond improvements, we opened those bids earlier in October. It's likely that work will start in the spring. Washington Cross Street Bridge repairs, so happy to say that we did get the additional funding at town meeting for the Washington Street Bridge. We are planning to start the repairs at the Cross Street Bridge next week, so the week after Thanksgiving. Winchester High School drainage, we did get supplemental funding also at fall town meeting, so we'll be scheduling that work for the spring. And then the McDonald Field Pump Station, we had previously awarded that contract, got some additional money at town meeting, and that, that work will be going on through the spring and probably into next summer. That's all I had. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Beth. Any questions for Beth? All right. Hearing none. It is exactly 7:45. We can start our public hearing on the tax levy classification. Dan, if you want to come up. Rich, I don't know if you're joining him. Thanks for coming in, guys.
Thank you for having us.
Oh. And George, sorry. So I'll open the public hearing on the tax levy classification and turn it over to you. Dan, you start?
Okay. Once again, it's pretty standard and simple here. You vote on whether you want a separate tax rate or not, regardless of the Chapter 110 money that we do annually. So you would want to vote one for a tax rate of one with no classification, and then no action on questions two, three, and four, because we don't have any open space. We don't do a residential exemption, because it doesn't work in this town. It's mostly in towns that have vacation homes or apartments, and we don't do a small commercial exemption, because it's not enough property from town to, really worth doing. So a vote of yes would be nice on question one, and no action on questions two, three, and four. The information I gave you is still a draft, as it says on the, on the letter I sent the other day, just time, with town meeting running later, we have to wait for it to close. So that won't be the end of the week. So the tax rate may change a dollar, I mean, I'm assuming a penny either way. Not for you, you got two. But make it a penny either way. But we should be, we're very, I'm sure we're very close to the number, so that's where we're at.
All right. Before I open it up to any questions from the board, is there anyone in the public that wishes to be heard on this public hearing? All right. Seeing no one, any questions by any board members? Discussion? Thoughts?
It's broken.
Very talkative group. I mean, this is something we, I mean, we, you know, it's, we've held this course for several years now, so.
Since 1984.
Yep. So unless somebody sees a course correction at this point, I think it makes sense to follow the recommendation and do the same. All right.
Sounds good.
Somebody wants to make a motion on those questions?
Move that we are in favor and vote yes on, sorry, I'm scrolling.
If I may, it's a question of one, on question one, for one, one tax rate.
On question one.
And no action on two, three, and four.
Move that we vote yes on question one and no action on questions two, three, and four.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? It passes.
All righty.
Thank you all for coming in. Happy Thanksgiving.
You'll be well.
Don't go too far, George. All right. At this point, I would open it up to public comment. If anyone here from the general public wishes to make a public comment, please raise your hand. I'll recognize you. Please come to the table, state your name and address, and you have up to three minutes to deliver your public comment. Is anyone here for public comment? All right. Seeing no one, I will close public comment, and we will go right next to our, next, sorry, next to our business agenda item of the transfer station fee review. So you guys want to come on up? Over another chair for Mary Ellen. Thank you all for joining us tonight.
Thank you.
Who wants to start?
I'm starting.
I'm gonna start, yeah.
Okay. So each year, we come to the board to talk about the transportation permit fees, which are set in the fall for a January permit start. We've gone through, each, each fall, the DPW does an analysis of what their existing operational costs are, as well as their indirect costs. So the, the transfer station is not run as an enterprise fund, but there has been discussion in the past by previous boards to have an analysis, is if it was to be run as an enterprise fund, what would the fee need to be to cover, to cover those costs? So before we get into the, the, the actual residential
um, what would the fee need to be to cover, um, to cover those costs. So, um, before we get into the, the, the actual residential fee, I just wanted to talk first about the capital fee. So dating back to the fall of twenty twenty-one, the board, and there's a copy of the vote in your packet, original vote, um, laid out a funding plan for the transportation, transfer station, um, capital project that's wrapping up. And so it included, um, pushing some of the, um, part of that was funded through, uh, a free cash appropriation, a million dollars, and then five and a half million dollars was borrowed. And so the idea was that the, the burden of the, um, debt service would be borne by the permit holders. And so there was an original, um, capital fee of twenty-two dollars that went into effect January 1st of this year for the, the period where we issued the ban. Um, and we did the permanent borrowing in March. So now we have, um, what that permanent borrowing cost is about four hundred and seventy thousand dollars a year. That's what's shown here, um, of which a hundred, the capital stabilization fund will be covering a hundred and seventy thousand dollars of it. Um, so we have about a three hundred thousand dollar debt service to be transferred over to the, uh, permit fees. So, the original recommendation was, um, based on the assumed borrowing costs of eighty dollars, which you actually voted earlier this year. So we can include it as part of the budget. Now that we have the actual, um, bar, borrowing costs, we're, we, we're recommending that we reduce that capital fee down to sixty-three dollars based on that, um, analysis of the four seventy minus the one, uh, seventy divided by, um, four thousand eight hundred permits was, which is about what we've, um, sold to date for residential first sticker permits, which is where we get the sixty-three dollars. So. Any questions on that piece of it before I go into the next part of it? Okay. Um, so the next part is, is looking more at the, um, operation costs. And I'm not going to go into much detail here. The first sheet has the, um, the permit revenue, um, as well as additional scale house and other revenue that's collected. Uh, we, although we, we sell the permits on a calendar year basis, some of these, uh, costs, the, the, um, other costs at the bottom here are based on a fiscal year. So we kind of mix and match. Um, the FY twenty-four expenses, so the transportation operating budget as approved at spring town meeting was one point nine eight million. Um, we had some additional increases in our recycling costs for twenty-four. And so at, at spring town, or excuse me, at fall town meeting, which is just closed, we had, uh, additional appropriation of a hundred thousand dollars go into the DPW budget. Um, we are expecting, um, a waste in the, a reduction in the solid waste. Um, so based on the amounts that we had in FY, um, twenty-three, we had, and you guys can explain this better than I can, but there was a, we had savings there. And so we had a turn back in that area. And so we're hoping that we'll have the same, um, same benefit this year. So, basically the, the projected operating budget is just over two million dollars. Um, and then this is the, the analysis that DPW does to, to basically, um, estimate what the indirect expenses would be. So that's somewhere around three hundred and fifteen thousand for a total of two point, um, three, four million, somewhere in that range. Any questions on this information?
So the expenses below the line are ones that essentially chargebacks, if you would theoretically, that the, um, transfer station for use of other town resources, right?
Yes. Just like the law department, but technically it's not enterprise.
Right, okay.
So these are paid outside of the, I mean.
Yeah.
Employee benefits aren't part of the D, of the, the DPW budget, but they're part of another. Um, so DPW staff and I went through and, and looked kind of tallying up where we are. So the top here is that, um, kind of operating budget indirect expenses. And we looked at a couple of different options, um, and how we might, uh, provide the board and how we might look at, um, raising the revenues for FY twenty-four. Um, so if we made no changes to the, um, permit fees or the scale house charges, if you look at the total with indirects, we'd be about a hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars in deficit. Um, we did look at, the idea was that, um, for the first vehicle permits, we had kind of, the thought was we were going to be around three hundred and fifty thou, three hundred and fifty dollars a permit for January 1st because we had the eighty dollar capital fee that was already voted. So what we did was basically, um, increase the permit fee by that seventeen dollars and then the capital fee would be the sixty-three dollars. So in total, we'd still be at the three fifty, which is kind of what we've already discussed. So we just did, made that change, uh, increasing the, the first permit vehicle fee from two seventy, which is, uh, as of right now in calendar year twenty-three to two eighty-seven, uh, we'd be about seventy thousand dollars, uh, in deficit. Uh, we then looked at, um, basically option two, plus increasing the second vehicle sticker fee from what is currently twenty dollars to thirty dollars. So if we did that, we'd generate about another nineteen or so thousand dollars of revenue. We'd be about fifty thousand dollars in deficit. Um, and then finally, we looked at, uh, the possibility of, um, increasing the commercial, um, waste, household waste by five dollars a ton, the commercial mixed waste by five dollars a ton, and then the building and demolition debris by five dollars a ton. Um, and so also I didn't, this wasn't included in your packet, but at the table tonight is a copy of, um, kind of a historical summary of the residential sticker fees as well as the, uh, commercial waste household fee. I can pass this down to the DPW folks.
I have it.
We have it.
Oh, you did? Okay. I don't know if you guys have anything to add to the.
I spelled it out really well.
So Beth, I probably wasn't paying attention in class, okay? Um, is there a reason this can't run in a deficit? Cause I'm looking at the price elasticity and I'm like, this, we go up to three fifty and like, that's, it's a lot of dough. And it's essentially two percent of your real estate taxes. It's sort of charging your real estate taxes of the average tax bill in Winchester. And then we have some other stuff coming along behind that. So I'm like, ah. That's where my brain's at.
Yeah. I mean, I don't, I think it's really a policy decision for this board and Leanne probably has the most history of all of us in terms of how this analysis kind of started.
I believe if we were close to within a hundred thousand dollars, we didn't necessarily make an increase based on that. Anything over a hundred is when we really get concerned and.
Okay.
Yeah. So Beth gave you the, um, the difference too in the deficit. So if we, if we don't incorporate the indirects, we'd be in the black by a hundred and fifty-six thousand. Um, and as you can see, all the way down too. But, um, that's been a, you know, tradition for at least fifteen years, I think so. Um, but it doesn't, like I said, it's not technically an enterprise fund, but we've always presented it this way. So we want to continue.
Other questions?
So Leanne, do I read option three correctly? That, does option three, option three yields what?
Um, the increase from two seventy to two eighty-seven.
Yep.
In addition, we've included a ten dollar increase in the second vehicle. Yeah. So it's a combination of.
So that generates about a hundred thousand dollars?
Um.
If, if what's left is fifty thousand?
Right.
Yeah, exactly.
So it's basically seventeen dollars times the.
Forty-eight hundred.
Forty-eight hundred, right.
Yeah. Option two is eighty-eight thousand, nine twenty-four. And then if you add on option three, which is nineteen, one twenty, and then option four, we figured about nineteen, one fifty-eight.
And if we didn't, did anyone do an analysis? If we didn't increase the vehicle permit fees by seventeen dollars and just did the commercial?
So the commercial fees generate around, um, nineteen.
Another nineteen.
Nineteen, one fifty-eight.
Yep. And last year, last January, we voted to increase it to three fifty total. So that's what we were trying to keep within. So we wouldn't have to make any changes.
I remember.
Okay.
So with increasing, so the, the current total permit fee right now is two.
June ninety-two.
Ninety-two.
Yep.
Um. By going up. Uh, I know you presented it, maybe you have it in there, the number of, of people who have a second permit, but.
I think there's nineteen hundred.
Yeah, nineteen hundred.
So that extra, that ten dollar increase generates about nineteen thousand dollars?
I'm just wondering if, if that many people will continue to purchase a second permit if the, the fee go, if the first permit goes up by fifty-eight dollars.
Actually, it was eighty total. It was going to be eighty total with the twenty-two, and now it's going to be, um, sixty-three on top of the twenty-two.
For the capital.
Yeah, the capital fee. So twenty-two was in last year for the capital fee and now it's going to be, um, another sixty-three. But in order to keep it, um, within, um, typical range, we decided on increasing it from two seventy to seventy, two eighty-seven and then decreasing the capital fee.
So the capital fee is the capital fee. And I guess we're on, so I'm not, we want to get all clever at the table because that seems like a bad way to do policy. But if you increase the all-in, so instead of increasing it by seventeen dollars from two seventy to two eighty-seven, you increased it by, you know, ten or something. So your all-in cost dropped to three hundred and forty dollars. You put the second permit still at the ten dollars. And I'm not sure you touched commercial just yet. To John's point, if we're trying to operate, not that we're trying to make you operate a deficit, but a deficit that's under a hundred thousand dollars, if we didn't, if we didn't try to hit three fifty, which I completely understand, Leanne, I was on some calls with you in the spring around how we got there, right? But if we got that all-in cost of three forty, which gets your capital money and increases the residential permit more modestly. And you took your ten dollars in the second vehicle fee, which to Anthea's point, you're saving ten dollars in the household. You might spend ten dollars more on your second vehicle, right? So net-net. We don't get as much money on the primary residential permit, but I wonder where that gets us on our operating loss.
I think the way we went into this was how do we maintain, um, the revenue in terms of, you know, last year versus this year, where we got to the seventeen dollars, right?
Mm-hmm. Right. So I think, are you saying, um.
Reduce that from seventeen to ten.
For the first vehicle permit would go from two seventy to two eighty?
Correct.
And the second vehicle sticker would go from twenty to thirty?
Yes.
So that's about.
Fifty grand.
Sixty-seven thousand of additional revenue. Um, so that would get us, you know, the first line here is no action at all. So that would get us, you know, under the.
Get us about halfway there.
Yeah.
Under the hundred thousand dollar threshold.
Right.
So if it throws up another sixty thousand something, like we just did.
Yep.
That you just under. So it's not fully what you realize at option two. It's a little bit less between option one and option two.
Is it like a ninety-one thousand dollar deficit? Yeah, somewhere in that range.
And what's, I mean, in the grand scheme of things, the ninety thousand deficit versus a thirty-one thousand deficit, how does that affect us?
Uh, I mean, it, 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 this is all general fund revenue, right? So ultimately, everything's going to fund the budget. It's just how we look at it, right?
Yes.
If you want to run it like an enterprise fund, you would incorporate all of these indirect costs into it now. There's no requirement. It's just something that I think historically the board has looked at.
Yes. No, it's, it's good to look at that way. There's, there's no cost.
Just a twenty percent increase year over year.
It's a big number, for sure. It's.
And looking at two, um, what you provided us, I mean, for residential permits, going back to, uh, two thousand and seven was a hundred and fifty dollars. It's increased two hundred and thirty-three percent in the past fifteen years, sixteen. Um. I think obviously that, that commercial revenue is just a smaller, smaller chunk coming in. Um, and while that's, you know, increased a bit in what we have presented, it seems like if you go back to two thousand and seven, um, those fees were, you know, ninety-three dollars. So increased kind of on a lesser percentage. So, um, just kind of something to, to take a look at in whether we're, um, you know, whether we want to consider those increases kind of at the, the same percentage over time.
So Michelle, if we take what you just did, and you add in the commercial, then are we right around that option two deficit, sixty-nine?
Correct. You would. I hadn't gotten all the way down to commercially yet, but I was trying to do the household ones. But yes, I agree with that, Rich. And then I had a different question when we get off fees, but we can stay here for a minute.
Anyone else on fees?
Well, I'm wondering if there's some more revenue out there for us, um, you know, this year if we, um, mobilize the license plate readers as well. And I know that we'll probably talk about that at some point, but, um, that was part of this strategy was that we were going to capture some lost revenue. Um, and I, I don't, I don't know if we are or not, but it seems like from what we spoke with other communities, that's a, um, you know, there, a lot of money that's left on the table, um, with, uh, people coming in and out with us, you know, not being able to, um, catch them and, and to enforce the, the permit. So, um, that, we might see some, some revenue from, from that as well. Certainly some efficiency.
My compliments on your, um, charging for TVs, TVs measuring the diagonal.
Yep.
Big diagonal, well, much, you guys know that? Fun thing today. Very good.
That was just for you, John.
He doesn't have small TVs either.
Exactly. You realize how big it was.
You know, it's, it's a little bit, you know, hard to look back at some of the historical data here just because their, um, the recycling market changed so much and, you know, we were, we had, you know, historically low fees and, um, cause we were generating a lot of revenue from recycling. So, um, it, it does, um, look like it's, it's been a, a, a big jump and it has been substantially. I mean, we are much higher than, um, comparable communities. Um, it's just a fact. So, uh, but it was, it's more of a market correction, I think, than, than anything else when we looked at the, at the, um, having to really, you know, pay in for recycling a lot. We were generating revenue. So, um, that's, um, the big jump there. I think the commercial jump there too was when we did a survey of other communities, we were significantly lower. So I think that we, that was a, a market correction as well. So, um, I think our strategy in the past has been trying to move up the residential, uh, permit, um, you know, and proportionally move up the, um, the commercial, um, permit as well. So it's just a strategy. Then that's what we've been employing for several years, just to kind of keep it somewhat equitable. Um, the only thing I, I don't know here is I thought we were around five thousand or so permits, you know, or, or we're, and we're at forty-eight hundred now. Have we been, that been reduced?
Well, if you look at it for the calendar year.
Yep.
It's roughly five thousand, but when you do it on the fiscal.
Okay.
It does, it does taper off a little bit.
Okay. I, I was just concerned that there may be a, a trend where, you know, our permit fees are going to go up because we're losing people to the commercial side, uh, because I think there is, you know, expectation, a lot of people that there is curbside pickup and something we've talked about. But, um, you know, that, that makes it a little bit harder. So when we're pushing the, the fee up to three fifty, it's, you know, we don't want to scare people off as well, even though it's the, the cost of doing business for us.
Sure.
So when you look at the, um, this, Mary Ellen provides this nice summary of the calendar year, um, sales to date. So there's a hundred and twenty, there's forty-six hundred and, forty-eight hundred and six first vehicles. Um, and then there's a hundred and twenty-three new residents. So we do get the additional revenue from them. We just kind of assume those people are then going to be.
Full price next year.
First sticker. The next year, but there'll always be some new residents that are not in common.
We've included them in the past into the roll-up, so.
Get, like, get you closer to the five thousand.
Get us close to the five thousand, yeah. And technically, you know, the low income is almost a hundred. So that gets included as part of the total permits. It's just that it's not the same price as the full price.
So when you rolled up, sorry, Anthea, um, right above this was, there was like the fifty thousand dollar anticipated savings in solid waste. There you go.
Yep.
What are we paying for recycling costs? And what are we paying for solid waste disposal costs?
So for twenty, oh, I'm talking about the recycling piece, two for twenty-four for recycling, um, we were able to hold a very low rate through, through October. And then we negotiated, um, the original increase was, was higher. So I know, it doesn't, it doesn't, it's not going to sound good when I say it, but it's better than it could have been. So.
We put on a lot of P.
November first through December thirty-first, it's seventy-five dollars a ton. And from January first through June thirtieth, it's a hundred dollars a ton for recycling. And then, and if you have the.
In terms of the solid waste, excuse me. In terms of the solid waste, excuse me. Each year, the solid waste contract goes up three percent. So right now, we're at ninety-eight something, and it'll be, yeah, it'll be a hundred-and-one next year. So that's another reason to, you know, consider the commercial increase, because we go up three percent each year on the solid waste, not just recycling, you know.
Right, that's just what it is, right? That's just our cost of removing the waste, like, and get charged for it. So those, those costs have to be passed on to someone.
Recycling is, is almost as expensive as solid waste now. It could have been more.
That's what I was going, no.
That's right.
We put an RFP out, as you were about to say.
Right.
When we got the news.
Was a hundred-and-fifteen a, a ton for, when we put out the RFP, and then we're able to negotiate with Republic now to get it lower.
The market rate's about a hundred-and-fifteen, so I guess we just got really lucky last year.
Mary Ellen, uh, there's, we're looking at just under five thousand kind of first permits all, all rolled together. How is that from a sort of number of households?
We have eighty-nine hundred households townwide. And included in that eighty-nine hundred are the condominiums and the, you know, multifamily that already have their pickup, under their HOA fees and things like that. I think nineteen hundred are the condominiums.
Nineteen hundred.
Of the, of the eighty-nine hundred, off the top of my head. I think that's roughly what it is.
So I have a follow-up to that question. So just Mary Ellen, since, let's say, twenty, I don't know, in the last ten years, twenty thirteen to now, twenty fifteen to now, is the, has the five thousand households remained reasonably static? Have we lost, you know, a hundred people there, here, or there?
When, when we had the SMART program, we would have people who had both curbside pickup and a SMART permit as well. And I think those are the ones that we shed.
When we dropped SMART, yeah, when we dropped SMART in twenty-two, I'm pretty sure there were over three hundred SMART? No, fifteen hundred.
Yep.
Fifteen hundred SMART, that's right.
Fifteen hundred SMART, yeah, so.
But I'm not saying we lost fifteen hundred. I'm saying that there was a percentage.
Like two-thirds, one-third, like, whatever?
A tenth, fifty?
I don't think it was two-thirds, one-third, yeah.
I'm just curious, we're seeing some attrition as, you know, so if we get to a three-fifty, three-forty number all-in for residential for three-fifty, whatever it is. But over the chart that you did, Beth, it's like, it's a thirteen-hundred percent increase, because I did the math. So it's not just two-hundred. Yep, in thirty-five years, it's thirty-five years, and thirteen-hundred percent. But even where Anthea, you know, started at two thousand eight, two thousand nine, I'm just, if we're just, if we're losing, you know, three or five percent of households every year, at some point, you know, the, the math doesn't work, right? And, and then you're having a different conversation about curbside pickup and what that costs. And then that's a different pressure on someone's, you know, sort of own enterprise of trash pickup. So, but we're not, it sounds like, Mary, we're not seeing necessarily a repeatable trend of losing households. You saw a drop-off at SMART.
Yep.
Yeah, and even at the two-ninety-two, I didn't see any significant drop. People understood through the customer service piece that we explained to them. We did a nice flyer with the town manager, kind of giving them the heads-up. There have been lots of write-ups about this discussion in the manager's newsletter and in the press. So I think, generally speaking, I'm not anticipating a huge, a huge drop-off.
And I think explaining the capital fee as well, right? That that, that portion is what you've seen as infrastructure improvement, right?
So when we did, when we did the mailing last year, we broke it out. So it was very clear to people that we weren't going from like two-seventy to two-ninety-two, yeah.
Just because.
Right.
I mean, my, my only concern would be that we have had significant reversions from, you know, the operating budget last year into this one, and we have very high operating reserves. And so, you know, to, you know, that's money that was taxed for our residents for our operating budget, right? So to, you know, if there is a, a year or a time to use some of those operating reserves or some free cash, ultimately, I guess, money from the general fund, to keep, to, to hold steady where, where that permit fee is now, I feel like this would be the year, you know? So that's just my own personal perspective.
Make it more incremental.
Yeah.
Do you think I'm gonna agree with you? I mean, that's the ultimate question, right?
Well, I don't know. But, you know, we'll see. I mean, certainly, there, we did a substantial project there. We, I think at least residents can see, you know, what they're, what they're getting. But it is, it's a, it's a high fee. And I, there were a lot of residents that used the SMART permit just because they didn't have a lot of trash, right? And they were seniors and single households. And so that's what we, we really fought, they're the ones that had the most impact financially. They went from fifty-five to three hundred, or whatever.
Or seventy the last year.
Seventy the last year, so, so there you go. Yeah, so, so that, that's the real, the real impact there. So, I mean, the, you know, certainly an increase is coming. I just, I, I don't know with, with those levels of reversions from our operating budget, I just, I...
So the reason for the reversion is the solid waste. So we budgeted ten thousand tons at the rate, each year it goes up.
Yeah.
And last year, we budgeted the ten thousand tons, and we came in around nine.
Yeah.
So that was the reason for like a hundred-and-eighty-five thousand dollar turnback.
I think we're coming down off COVID highs in terms of the volume of trash coming in.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I don't, I mean, I mean, reversions...
Just ahead of the Christmas season.
I don't mean reversions specific to the transportation and DPW. I just mean generally in our, in our budget, sorry.
That's all right.
But, but yeah. I mean, any, any time that we can, you know, reduce, you know, how much, you know, we, we, you know, our town produces, you know, one of the highest amounts of trash that goes through our transfer station, so. You know, we, so anything that's lower is, is, is good, but...
What thoughts?
Has there, I know at one point, this is just kind of jumping on the sort of high volume of trash that we're producing. I know at one point, there was conversation around sort of composting incentives. Is there anything forward on that beyond the bins at this transfer station?
So it was part of the, the charge of the, you know, I don't know what you wanna call it, the advisory committee that we had to, you know, diagnose what, what could be done, what reasonably could be done. SMART was our number-one answer, the pay-as-you throw. But with the new recycling costs, we're gonna have to rerun that whole analysis to see, you know, what, what that is. We, we did talk about incentivizing it through a hauler, would have to do an RFP. But, you know, nothing that I'm adverse to.
Yeah, so other communities, you know, do programs where if, if, like Black Earth, for example, if they get...
Like the town will buy the bins.
Right.
So there's the initial startup costs that are pulled out of it.
Or if they get so many subscribers, then the cost goes down per subscriber, right? But that would certainly help us remove that...
Wet.
Wet, heavy solid waste from the disposal stream, so, yeah. Right now, with the, the way we have it set up now, it comes to, there's a compost station, and then we pay, we have a contract with Black Earth to remove it. So it's not, there's not substantial cost savings to the town.
It, it works out pretty darn close to disposal costs.
There's obviously other, other benefits, but from a financial standpoint, it's about break-even the way you do it now.
And if that was, went through an RFP and sort of, to sort of incentivize people to do that, that would also, those are, as I understand it, that they do like curbside compost pickup, right? So that would also sort of start to eliminate that, that you just talked about, the contract that you have and then the value.
I think you'd always wanna have the option to bring it. You know, that's, that's kind of the neat thing about the transfer station is, you know, if you have lobster on Wednesday, you can get rid of it on Thursday.
Not if you have it on Saturday night, though.
Other thoughts? So where's, where's everyone's hat? Where's everyone's head at this point?
Three hundred and forty dollars and ten dollars for the second permit, that's what money is.
Raise the commercial.
Raise the commercial, five bucks, as option four indicates.
Other people?
So Beth, you were kind of calculating that a bit.
Yeah, so just using a forty-eight hundred dollars, a forty-eight hundred permit. So the ten dollars times forty-eight is forty-eight thousand. Ten dollars times, say, around nineteen hundred for the second permit is another nineteen thousand. That's around sixty-seven thousand. The commercial increase, five-dollar increase as proposed is, is also another nineteen thousand. So that would put you just around eighty-six thousand. And then I assume the capital fee, you would vote to reduce it from the eighty to the sixty-three. So the, the permit itself would go to two-seventy plus ten plus sixty-three, so three-forty-three.
Deficit-wise, that would be about seventy thousand?
Yeah.
Hopefully.
One-fifty-eight minus eighty-six.
Sixty-something.
That's right.
Around seventy, round, round numbers, seventy-ish.
Kind of cuts it in half, a little bit better.
And everyone saves seven dollars?
Seven dollars.
So I bet it was ten, I know.
I know, that was going for, but that's all right.
So thinking about, right, when we talk about the water and sewer rates, we typically say we're gonna increase it six-point-five percent this year, and then zero, six-point-five percent, and then, and, and...
You have a plan.
Sort of plan ahead and, and look at it. So if we were to look at transfer station, and we would say it's gonna cost three-hundred-and-forty-three dollars for a, a permit this year, what's it gonna cost in twenty twenty-five?
So we are coming into the last year of our disposal contract, and I believe that is our intent to go out for RFP for recycling services before July first at some point. So it's tough to tell.
It's hard to say.
Which we, which we did, and, right, and you, one-fifteen, you said, right?
One-fifteen fixed.
Fixed.
Or you could, or you could roll the dice at variable costs based on the market.
Which, based on where the market's gone, I don't think is in our favor.
And we're at a hundred now, right?
Mm-hmm.
Right.
And sometimes we get a one-year contract, sometimes a three-year contract, depending on what the market is as well, right?
We usually do three years. We try to do three years enough to do it, or five. The last, the last couple have been five.
Uh, if and when we do the disposal contracts, I'd like to do longer, if possible, just because disposal in Massachusetts is a game of musical chairs. Someone's gonna get left out eventually.
Because the burn plants only have so much space.
Landfills are closing. DEP is happy to see trash leave the state.
Not a pretty picture. And we already know that next year, it's gonna go up three percent for our last year of solid waste as well, so. We budget for that each year, and then we have to relook at this every fall.
I just hate for us to have such a, percentage-wise, it's sixteen, if we do three-forty-three, it's about sixteen percent, right? But, I mean, dollar-wise, it's still fifty dollars, which is fairly substantial. I'd hate for us to do that now and then have a higher increase again in the future.
But you have to remember that the, the significant part of that is the capital fee, right? So we're going from twenty-two to sixty-three dollars with the capital fee.
And the capital fee is gonna stick around?
Yeah, so that'll be, it's actually only ten years, and then...
Yeah, there's a ten-year portion and a thirty-year portion.
Right, so I think the debt surface goes down to around, somewhere in the twos.
The environmental work, we were able to finance over thirty years.
So, it's not forever, but...
So we have got Michelle proposing, Michelle Plan, gets us to three-forty-three?
Three-A. Not quite option four, three-A.
Three-A.
Yeah, I mean, it, it seems a little bit like splitting hairs, to be honest with you. I mean, to hit that, you know, two-forty-three, I think there's a significant, you know, that move over three hundred for us is, is a big one psychologically for residents, so, you know. And, you know, and Anthea mentioned the water rates, too. I don't wanna talk about that tonight, because...
It ran out.
September eleventh, coming to a meeting.
Our viewers coming back.
We talked about it this morning.
That's gonna be, you know, we, we projected, you know, pretty conservatively there, and that's gonna be another big, you know, hit for our residents, I'm imagining for, I don't know, right?
It was a very wet summer.
Yes, so...
Make your money on dry summers.
Yeah.
So, so it's gonna be, you know, a lot of increases in, in right around the same time that we're borrowing on Lynch, and we're doing, you know, a lot of those things. So it's just, you know, that's why I was looking at no change there. But that would, that would be my, my hope for, for this, I think.
Yeah, I just don't know, I mean, I, I certainly agree with you, Mike. I just don't know if no change, where does that leave us in the budget cycle? But I know FinCom's goal being to balance the budget without the use of any free cash, so. They seem pretty, um, pretty committed to that.
Well, it's something for us to talk about, right?
But we, we balance it without the free cash, it's just the indirects.
Yeah. If you look at Beth's chart, yeah.
I'm talking, sorry, not talking, not talking DPW, I'm talking just general, general budget.
Oh, oh.
Oh, okay.
Townwide.
Townwide. And, and, you know, and not, certainly, like I said, I agree with Mike, it's just, you know, every little bit, it helps. And I get it, you know, it's, certainly, you know, fees have gone up, you know, but I think a lot of it had to do with some market corrections and things like that in this area. And I know, Mike, you've been saying for years that, you know, it's one of the biggest crisis problems we have is, you know, trash removal. You know, every municipality has this issue.
Yeah, it's an essential service, and it's just, you know, one that hits residents across multiple income levels and, you know, multiple demographics pretty hard. And so, a- as I said, I mean, I, I get that FinCom wants to, you know, have that conversation about balancing with, without using free cash, which is great. I think that we've been pretty conservative and right on with the overall, you know, budget for the, the, the past couple of years, you know. But again, when we see all those reversions from, you know, the, the buzz, I mean, these are, you know, we're taxing residents, and then, you know, we're, we're saying we're just gonna keep this money, but keep charging you more. It's just a, it's a bad way to do business, from my perspective, so. And we have a lot of expenses that are going to really hit coming in twenty-four on residents. So if there's a little relief here, great. If, if there isn't, you know, there's only so much that we can do, so.
Okay, what else?
It's, I mean, it's true, right? We have the Lynch coming. It's a, it's a big increase, and, you know, we looked at budget and turnbacks from last year is, is quite a bit. I think, I might think what I would like us to see is if there's a way that we can also sort of, in the, in waiting for the next contract to go to RFP, also to think about that sort of composting and see what that can do to the solid waste in terms of volume, because, you know, that could be helpful. It's also, thinking back to when we had all of the students here for the climate position, and those are some of the initiatives that they're leading, like, those are, schools are starting to do... Like those are, schools are starting to do composting despite like the leftovers that come home in lunch boxes. So I think, I mean, it is something that we could look towards as well to kind of decrease that. I mean, I, I think that the, the increase and, you know, understanding that it's primarily in the capital fee, I think that's, that's really high. And I worry that the sort of projections on the second permit are, are going to fall because it's such a big, big number where some people just won't have, you know, if that's going up, they're not going to put the, the thirty dollars to another permit.
So what do people want to do?
Can we start with the capital fee? Do we agree that sixty three is the, is the number? Based on the debt service?
Yep, yep.
Yes.
Well, that makes it a nice, nice number for the sticker if it's two seventy plus the capital fee is three thirty three.
What's your number, John?
It costs me three thousand bucks. You know, we talked about three fifty and I'm not really happy with three fifty, but if I can get my mind around, you know, the three fifty and then it's the, it's wherever inflation is plus the increase in the per cost, assuming there's an increase in per cost ton of recycling at, you know, next June. I gotta be looking at that, like that makes sense to me. This is a good bitter pill to swallow, but really, you know, being fiscally responsible, but to slow, to slow down these, you know, fourteen and eighteen and twenty percent increases to have people be able to say like, okay, this is going to be three fifty this year. And if we assume that recycling doesn't fall apart, but it could, or just
I think it's already on the floor. I don't think it's going
You know, does that mean it's like another twenty five bucks a year or, you know, twenty dollars a year? Because I'm back to price elasticity. George, what's cost a week? You come to my house and pick my trash up, ten dollars, twelve dollars? What's the average around town, would you say, amongst your competitors?
I think on the low end somewhere around sixty five and high end is about ninety more.
A month?
Yeah.
Okay. So that's for Matt? Did I answer your question? No, I said three fifty.
Oh, you did?
Yeah. I know, I liked, you know, the three forty three, seven dollars, I mean, come on, it's a box of Girl's Got Cookies, for god's sakes. All right?
Excuse me, Beth, on option one, where you say no changes to permit fees or scale house charges in the revenue of two point one eight seven, does that include the current plan of three fifty?
So it's just based on two, so this revenue doesn't include the capital fee, so it's based on two seventy.
Okay.
Yeah, because I, I took that out of the equation because I'm paying a separate
Gotcha, yeah, that's good, thanks, I'll make sure. So that would, you know, if you don't incorporate the indirects, as Anthea was trying to say, two seventy, then we would be, you know, still in the black by a hundred and fifty six thousand dollars. It's just if you want to incorporate the indirects, then we're not. So as Beth said, just a matter of policy. Here are our options.
Well, what will be the indirects at that, it's the one fifty eight?
Um, yeah, we have a total of, the total indirect cost of three fifteen. Yeah. So the operating budget is two point oh three oh, two seven eight. And then when you incorporate the three fifteen of indirects, it becomes two point three four six. So that's what we're working with to, you know, get to a number that balances that.
So we're well over that, the hundred, a hundred thousand dollar threshold that we
Yeah, well, closer, yeah, to get it closer. And then when Beth reduced the capital to sixty three, you know, it looked like we could stay at three fifty as we planned last year by, you know, raising it to two eighty seven and incorporating the reduced sixty three, but it's up to you all, obviously.
So, and I mentioned the, like, water and sewer and how we do that. So, but, I mean, is there a way that we could say three fifty for the next two years? And, I mean, the problem is, always look at it and vote and change it, so
Yeah, I think it's hard, just especially since we're at the, in FY twenty five, we'll be at the end of our solid waste disposal contract and, and, I don't know, who knows where we're going to go.
You think we're at the floor, right?
For recycling.
For recycling, I think the sky's the limit for disposal.
So I'd rather go for less in this I'd rather go for less in this increment, because if we're at three fifty, because we said we'd go there, can't stay there for two years. And if we go to three forty or three forty three, and we go up another seven or twelve dollars next year, that capital fee is with us. It's going to be, it's the difference of a twelve dollar per year increase, a fifteen dollar per year increase. If we go up ten bucks this year or thirteen bucks this year on the permit fee, I'd still rather give us, unless we don't have room, but I'd rather not hit that number if we can split the difference of a deficit. And because we're going to probably have to go up next year, because I'm with you, Anthea, if we could, I'd love to say that we're not going to hit you again in two years, but we just can't promise that. And it's very unlikely, let alone we can't promise it.
Right, I mean, we've increased every year or two years since twenty fifteen. Actually, that's not true. We went down in twenty fifteen. We've increased every year since
We don't like to talk about that year.
Looking at this. So then I guess, Michelle, I would I'll ignore it. Michelle, I would be with you, but I would say not increasing the second vehicle fee because, I mean, actually, it would be kind of an interesting economics experiment if someone's taking a micro class, someone's looking at it, but I think that that, you know.
I think, excuse me, we asked Mary Ellen about this in our meeting, didn't we? And what your thoughts were if we went up ten dollars on the second vehicle feedback in terms of residents or?
I mean, we'll definitely lose some people. I mean, there's, as far as the percentage of them, I mean, I don't think it would be more realistically than ten percent of the current users would. But I would probably get thirty percent of them complaining about the fee, but then when we talk it through and we talk about these indirects and we give them some education on it, they, they will vote on the side of convenience in an affluent community.
That's what it is, it's a convenience.
It is, I know it's a difficult conversation and I live here as well, so I feel the pain, but, you know, all, all in, in the end, they buy for the convenience.
I mean, the difference if you ca- keep all those people, nineteen thousand.
All right, so
I'm going to say, I'm going to say three forty.
Nice, I like that number. Second. You gotta make a motion.
Three forty and what? Because we have like a bunch of different moving pieces.
It was the two
So the residential sticker would go up seven dollars from two seventy seven, two seventy to two seventy seven.
Correct.
No raising commercial?
Then I would raise the commercial.
And sorry, what?
I would raise the commercial.
Yes.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, so that's a residential first sticker by seven, commercial by five. And I get the other question, that is, second vehicle, do we raise that? By ten.
You can go to five, I mean, we just, we pick, you can do every one, you can do two.
He said that this is what charge was.
Nine thousand people, nineteen hundred permits, what?
Anthea, like five dollars instead?
I'll take five.
Once.
That's the revenue, but that's okay.
I mean, I don't think I have a problem with the ten. I think if you're getting a sticker, you're going to get it. I mean, you might lose ten percent, I agree, but, but I'll go five, whatever you guys want.
I like ten. Mike, what do you think?
Yeah, that's fine. I mean, I, I think, you know, if you're, you know, as Mary Ellen says, it's, it's really a convenience thing for people to have the flexibility to whichever car. So I mean, I, I, I think that if you're making that decision, it's not, you know, going to be a deal breaker for you, but, you know, at a certain, at a certain point it might, I don't know. So, you know, if you've got, you know, multiple cars that you're using as well, then
It's ten dollars.
That's right. Is okay.
It's okay.
That's what I'm trying to say, it's ten dollars.
It's ten dollars. So you turn around and leave, okay?
Today I pay ten dollars, ten years from now, I'll pay, I won't pay it.
Do we get a lot of people that pay like for like a day permit that are just doing?
Some.
Some.
Yep.
One day permit?
Do we advertise that at all?
What?
Do we like market that at all?
Uh, we did a hundred and seventy six last fiscal year. One day permits at fifty dollars each.
Do you have to be a resident or anybody can?
We typically see them, I, I believe we typically see them for when families are helping maybe their elderly family get out of the house. So the, we're giving them an exception because they're coming from another state to help mother and dad.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Makes sense.
But when you put it that way, it's
Here's the softie.
They want their heaviest trash.
Do you want me to recap what I heard?
Sure.
Okay, capital fee, sixty three dollars.
Yep.
First residential sticker, two seventy seven, so the total residential permit fee would be three forty.
Yes.
Second residential sticker, ten dollar increase from twenty dollars to thirty dollars. And then a commercial increase on commercial waste, commercial household, commercial mixed, building and demo, all of those would go up five dollars a ton.
That's what I have.
I'll second that.
I don't think I can make a motion.
Just kidding, you guys, just relax, will you?
Then I'll make a motion, because I have the same numbers then. I don't want you on second. Sixty three dollars for the capital charge, two hundred and seventy seven dollars for the sticker for the first vehicle, a ten dollar addition for the second car sticker, so that's up to thirty dollars, and a five dollar on commercial scale and whatever those other words were that I'm supposed to say.
Oh, so Patty, it's commercial waste, commercial household, commercial mixed and building and demo debris.
And when would that be effective?
January first, twenty twenty four, correct?
Yep.
Thank you.
Yes. That's my motion, all those things.
Mike, second, so, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Pass, unanimously. Thank you all for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for your patience at Thanksgiving.
Have a nice Thanksgiving as well.
So we can throw our lobster in the compost Friday after Thanksgiving.
We'll be there.
All right. Next up are our friends from Civico Waterfield, Lot Design. Sam is here. Dan is here. We, I think have some people that are going to zoom in.
Yeah? Like on camera or on?
Yeah, what we do with that.
We have to keep turning around, don't we?
That's only thirty five minutes.
What?
Fifty five minutes.
You're all, Sam?
Yep.
You're all set too, for you?
Yep, I've joined the Zoom meeting.
Okay. This one's on.
Is it going to keep arguing?
That's right, sorry. Is that better? Hey, do yours?
Close one of them. We're in twice.
You're in twice as town manager.
Um, yes, because I have to be in for, um, because Beth is the co-host. So is that out?
That one's off now.
Yep, seems to be working.
But we'll just mute it.
Yeah, that, this, this, this is the co-host, that has to be muted.
Yeah. So then I'll turn on mine. The other one?
If he can hear us, then we're good.
Joe, can you hear us?
I don't kind of see. Thank you.
If you unmute yourself, can you talk?
He won't be able to talk.
Yeah, we can't hear.
Now it's muted.
Now try.
Now, we're, we don't have any feedback, I turned on, turned on my
Joe, how about now, can you hear me?
Oh, yeah.
All right. Excellent.
I think we write down how we did that.
Who's taking the minutes right now? Could we put all that in the minutes?
It is recorded on one camera.
All right, we go back to the tape and watch that. Thank you guys for joining us.
For having us.
For having us.
I don't know if you want to frame the issue.
Sure.
But, you know, there's some, been some developments in the Waterfield a lot, some changes to the design and kind of tell us where you're at, where you're headed and what you're looking for this board and certainly open it up to everyone. You've got your presentation, it was made available to us, so, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. My name is Sam Scopitone, I'm here representing Civico Development and I'm here with Dan Hubbard from Causeway Development, our partner. The last time we were before you, earlier this year, we were requesting preliminary approval of our schematic plans as, as a first step before going to the planning board to seek a special permit. And that was required by the land disposition agreement. We have been working through the planning board process and as a result of some feedback we've received from the fire department and the abutter, we have decided to make some changes to the design that have required us to come back to the select board. And I'll summarize the issues for you. Essentially, we have to come back to you because we are, the redesign results in a loss of four units to the building and a loss of three resident parking spaces. And, and these changes have arisen because we needed to add a fire truck turning, a turnaround in the rear of the property and also we needed to widen the alley between our site and the abutter which have, which has required us to push back the building from Waterfield Road. And so we've lost actually five units because of that, but we are proposing to raise the front portion of the building to four stories which would allow us to offset um, which would allow us to offset, um, one of those units. So we have a net loss of four units. While we were doing the redesign, we also attempted, we, we succeeded in moving, uh, all of the parking off of MBTA land, which is something that, uh, they were concerned about. And one of the benefits of moving the front building back from Waterfield Road is it opens up the, uh, it, it, we are no longer blocking the abutter's window, which is an issue that he had raised. Um, so I can take you through the site plan here. Sorry, the the little videos are blocking my screen. So on the left, you can see the original plan that you approved. The highlights in yellow are the areas of the MBTA land that we were encroaching on with the parking. And, and on the right, you can see the new proposed site plan, um, where we have moved the parking off of MBTA land. The, the large red, uh, the large orange, um, shaded area in the rear of the site is where the fire truck would do a three-point turn um, and sort of back into this notch in the building that we've created. And they would pull out forward. And then this other shaded area, oh, you can't really see it, cause the, our faces are blocking it. But on the right-hand side of the plan, uh, it shows the widened alley, which is, uh, twenty-foot wide. There you go. We were required to make a twenty-foot wide, um, access for the fire truck so that they could have a full, two hundred and fifty-foot fire, uh, fire hose access around the building. Another comment on this plan is that by opening up the rear, we have been able to move the, uh, trash, uh, the trash enclosure further back to the site and, and sort of opened up the access to that, so it works better. Sorry.
Use the arrows to the next one.
Oh. Oh, it's, it's just blocking my, um, the bottom here where I have the notes. Oh, there we go. Okay, um, so the next, this next slide shows the, the new front building, which you can see has been pulled back from Waterfield Road. Sorry. We have some, an updated rendering showing what the four stories looks like. The visual impact is actually lessened by the fact that it's pushed back from the road more, so you can see this, um, we have this new plaza in the front that is more of a landscaped pedestrian amenity along the street. Um, and that opens up the, the view from the abutter. Um, we have also relocated the front door from what was the corner and now is in the center of the building. Um, so I'll just take you through some floor plans, um, just to illustrate the impact that, that, um, the redesign has had. Um, this shaded area is this notch that we've created in the side of the building, um, and, this just shows the basement plan. We have, we're keeping the same number of parking spaces in the basement, but we've moved them around a little bit, and, uh, we have a, a few more compact spaces to accommodate that, that notch. The ground floor, a- as I mentioned, there's the, the alley that's been opened up in the front. I mentioned the lobby entry is now centered, and the trash room is moved further to the rear of the site. This shows the impact to the parking, so, um, there were, uh, we lost three spaces on the ground level. This shows the impact of the, that notch in the building on the unit layouts, so we've lost one bill, one unit in the rear on each of the three floors.
So then you converted some of the one-bedrooms into studios in order to get some square footage?
Yes.
What's the difference in square footage between a studio and a one-bedroom?
On average, it's probably five hundred to six fifty, so about a hundred and fifty square feet.
Thank you.
Yeah, and we'll show you a summary of the unit breakdown, uh, a little later. Um, another thing to point out on this plan is that the access, the second egress from the rooftop terrace, or the second floor terrace, is now directly off of the terrace to this stairway. Um, whereas before, you had to go into the building and then down to the staircase, the stairway. And I, as I think I mentioned, we, we lost, we lost one unit on each floor of the front building, um, so, so that's two, and then we gained one by adding a fourth story. Um, and this, you can see, on the fourth floor, we lost the rooftop deck, um, to the fourth story that we added. And this shows the, um, area that we gained out front. So here's the unit comparison for before and after. Uh, and what we wanted to emphasize here is that the affordable unit breakdown is very similar. Um, we, we only lost, um, one bedroom in the affordable units, uh, and gained a studio. But other than that, um, we have the same number of affordable units. And the unit mix is very similar. Um, so most of the additional one, uh, most of the additional studios we're adding are on the market rate side. Um, this is the parking comparison. Um, we lost a total of three parking spaces, um, but those are all gonna be on the residential side. There will be no loss in the publicly accessible parking.
And I'll add, just the, uh, the ratio for the resident parking is effectively unchanged in this. When we've lost four units, we lost three parking spaces, we're still at the point eight ratio we were before.
Um, and Dan can speak more to this if you have questions, but the financial impact to the town should be minimal, um, because the allowable rents have increased in the past year, so that has offset the, some of the unit losses. So the resulting cash flow and tax revenue should be similar to previous projections, uh, and no change in the purchase price. Um, so, so we're asking, we're asking the, um, select board to approve this change in the, in the plan so that we can resume with the planning board. We do have the, the peer reviews ongoing with the planning board, and those have been put on hold for now. And just to give you a sense of our timeline coming up, we, we just submitted a pre-application for funding to the state. Um, and, uh, if we're invited into the funding round, we would submit a full application in February. And if all goes well, we would be in the ground, uh, spring of twenty twenty-five. So.
Questions?
Yeah, so I, I had a meeting, Beth and I, with, um, the entire Civico team earlier today about these changes, um, and, you know, last week as well. Management talked to them, so, you know, this is not, this is what we kind of expected as you go through the permitting process, you know, different bodies weigh in, you know, changes are made. So, you know, this is fully expected that we would have some, some type of changes. Um, what's important here is that none of the affordable units, uh, we're not losing any affordable units. Um, we're only using, losing one bedroom, so you're seeing a lot of the changes on the market rate side. So, that's good, parking ratio is the same, we're keeping the same amount of public parking. We're also addressing some of the concerns that some of the abutters that we've met with, um, had, um, by widening that alley, uh, not blocking that business's window. So, and then, you know, i- if, with the new design, I don't know if you wanna put that picture back up, but it's, you know, you, you see that opportunity for maybe some landscaping outside, you know, in that pedestrian area, you know, um, you know, it's, it's very early preliminary, but, you know, maybe, you know, you could put some, you know, outdoor dining in there or something, you know, maybe a couple, a couple of tables or things like that, so. Um, I know Civico's gonna work through that, but, you know, these are changes that, you know, from the overall picture uh, of our project and what the town is expecting to get here are kind of de minimis, so that's great. But that we need to approve it so that they can continue on in the permitting process, like we did the preliminary designs with, um, planning board. You know, if all goes well, hopefully, you know, that process will wrap up, you know, near the beginning of the year, and then you can, you know, um, move on in the funding process, which, you know, that timeline's, you know, exciting now that you have the opportunity in February to, you know, possibly get funding, uh, and then kinda go from there with construction, you know, slated for, you know, twenty twenty-five, which dovetails nicely with what the MBTA has kinda said their timeline as well, so. Some movement here, uh, in the positive, uh, again, not unexpected that we would see these, um, changes as people weighed in, but certainly, um, if there's positives from it, it's that we're not losing, you know, what we expected from the affordable side and financially. So with that, any questions?
I just wanted to mention that I had, um, town councils here and had reviewed these changes, and I don't wanna speak for you, Jay, but you reviewed and didn't, there, there were any impact to the LDA or anything like that, so.
No, the, the flexibility that, uh, you can exercise with the vote is baked into the, uh, LDA.
Questions, comments?
I think it's a good job, we're, no, addressing the constraints, and I think it's, in a lot of ways, a better project. I think the, you know, biggest thing is the scaling in the front, I think it looks good, I think it's, it's more inviting now to me. Uh, uh, and, and even though it's a little taller, it's, it's almost less imposing because it's set back from the street. So, my compliments, thanks for doing it.
Thank you.
And, uh, yeah, as was said, you know, that front area, this was put together very quickly, but we have all intentions of trying to find something, you know, uh, it's our, really our main landscaping opportunity here, and our invitation to the building, to everybody that walks by, so we're gonna put a lot of effort with our landscaping architect and others to get that to be a, a great welcome mat for the building.
Yeah, I would say thank you, I mean Civico's been a great partner with us, um, through this entire project, so it doesn't surprise me that you were able to, um, really work hard and keep the intent of the project, um, consistent with our objectives, and especially the affordable housing and parking. I mean, those are the two kind of, uh, moving parts for us, you know, going through this and through the entire, um, public process as well, so thank you. I think that it, um, looks great, makes sense, um, it's kind of what you expect going through the process, as Rich said, to make some of these changes, especially, um, when they come from the, the fire department and their safety issues really inherently, so, um, appreciate it, um, it looks great, I think you guys did a fine job.
Thank you. All right, if there's nothing else, uh, just, we would need to make a motion to, um, accept the changes.
Jay, any thoughts?
I think that's sufficient, we can sync it up just for the record tomorrow, but, yeah, that, that, that's fine.
Move that we approve the changes as presented by Civico to the, um,
Do you wanna reference their November sixteenth letter? Should we reference her? Did you put them all, your requests were in a November sixteenth letter?
If that, as presented, if we just write a confirmatory letter tomorrow, it's comfortable with that, so I think the motion.
That's presented.
As presented.
Is there a second?
Second, sorry.
Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Repose, passes, unanimously. Thank you guys for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe, for being on standby, uh, to assist as well. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you Patty for, for technology.
Navigating.
Thank you Patty.
Jay, thanks for coming.
Sure.
All right, um, well Patty. Yep.
It's a nice issue, you can do it all in reverse now.
It'd seem much quicker to get everyone down. Uh, next up, uh, Lynch School Traffic Update, and I see Eric is here. Hey, you, you here for this? Come on up.
Come on up.
Can see better.
I'll keep it simple for you.
Yeah.
All right.
Jay, like?
Uh, good evening, members of the board, thank you for having me this evening, I'm gonna give you a, a pretty brief update about, uh, where we're at with the, uh, the Lynch and neighborhood design projects. Where we're at and where we're headed. Um, just a quick reminder, and I'm happy to walk through the projects individually at the end of my presentation if people have, uh, questions or want more details. Um, but just a reminder that, you know, we have roughly what we're calling kind of twelve distinct projects that are part of the, um, engineering design around the Lynch Elementary School, um, all related to, uh, you know, traffic calming and, um, safety and access to the school. Uh, really through the lens of proximity to the school, um, hearing from the public, uh, crash history and looking at ped bike volumes. Um, so, yeah, we are aiming to design and construct all of the twelve projects, uh, that was part of the town meeting, um, vote that took place in the spring. Um, and construction cost, which includes design, um, police detail, administration services, uh, things of that nature, the full cost is around three million dollars. Um, there's a lot on this timeline, it's a little overwhelming. Um, I kinda want it to be in that way because there's so much that goes into this, and it's been, you know, a process that started about a year ago and still has some time to go. So we're on the star now, um, I tried to break it up a little bit and have the kind of neighborhood updates and outreach pieces in red, and the green is sort of deliverables and, uh, submissions to the, to the town engineering department. Um, so we started last year, I won't run through all these, we started last year, uh, with a study, we did some outreach, uh, and then finalized our study based on all that outreach, that's when we came to the board last year as well. Um, we start, initiated the engineering design this summer, that included getting land survey, which was a key piece to determine that we are truth-checking all of the kind of conceptual ideas that we had come up with to make sure that they're constructable. Um, we actually just, uh, did some neighborhood outreach in October as well, um, we're here tonight, um, we're gonna come back, um, after we've done some design work, um, to the neighborhood in the spring, uh, submit our, our, uh, design, preliminary design package to the engineering departments and, uh, various town entities in the, in the spring. Um, and then move towards final design with, uh, updated c- construction cost estimates to bring to town meeting in the fall, or, excuse me, in April. Um, construction will then, um, kind of begin, and we kinda have to phase it out to determine if we're gonna, uh, do some of the construction in summer of twenty-four, and maybe some of it in summer of twenty twenty-five. Uh, but all is intended to be completed for when the Lynch opens in the fall of twenty twenty-five. Um, just real quick, uh, neighborhood outreach, we did a couple of meetings with the, with the Pond Street neighborhood and with the Horn Pond Brook neighborhood. Um, there's an online form that's live right now at that link, um, it's been on the website for almost a month now. Um, we also have the recordings of the, of the meetings online as well, so people can watch the, watch the recordings if they weren't able to attend, and also then fill out the form, uh, based on what they wanna kind of bring to the table for that, um, so we're gonna be bringing all that in for part of our engineering design over the winter.
Erica, what, what did you find, or did you find anything different between the October twenty-two outreach and the October twenty-three outreach, now that we're had, had more discussion as a community about that, or it's the same types of concerns?
Honestly, it was fairly consistent, which was refreshing, it didn't change a lot, which was a good thing.
Good.
Yeah, so I, I, uh, more people attended the second one, which was great too, people are kind of picking up on it. I did, uh, I was gonna speak to it a little bit in a moment, but I guess the slides are really irrelevant. You know, people are generally looking for traffic calming and safety measures, so that we tried to align that with what our concepts were, and that really hasn't changed. Some of the things that, I think the tools we're gonna use, use to do the traffic calming and safety is gonna be, uh, changed a little bit, so I'm gonna get into that in a moment.
So can I ask you something, because, uh, this is a pretty common thing, I, I, I use the traffic crossing signal over at, um, uh, Ginfield pre- frequently. And it's like a jump ball, half the time traffic stops, half the time it doesn't.
The flashing beacon.
Flash, yeah, and, and it's like, it, I, I, I might as well be invisible. And, um, so, but I, I think about kids, and they trust that to work, the traffic to stop. How, how, how do we get that to, may, uh, maybe it's just slower traffic by the school to, because I have no confidence in that system, frankly.
Yeah, um, it sounds like you could do my job, because that's. Yeah. Um, it sounds like you could do my job because that's exactly my answer. The tendency of people to yield increases when speeds are down, are lower. And you're, uh, you're more likely to see somebody and more likely to press on your brake. So that's, that's the intention of what we're trying to do here. Uh, lighting's another thing that really helps if, if, especially at night, if something's well lit.
This one on Pond Street, I mean, you worry about the one at Ginfield, the one on Pond Street's.
It's a challenge.
Yep.
I mean.
On the, on the bike path?
Yeah, I mean, you just can't.
Please.
You can't see that at all.
To be fair, it's better than when we had nothing there and there was just a crosswalk, so.
No, but I mean, to John's point, you know, I agree.
It's a la, it's layers of things, right?
Yeah.
I think it's not just, it's not just one thing.
Yeah. So, uh, yeah, I guess I can, I don't really have a great slide for this. I was going to speak to it anyway. So, uh, part of the feedback that we received, um, that I don't think we are going to fully address as part of this project, but I want to make sure the board is aware of, is that there was a good amount of people looking for traffic calming on Pond Street. And while I think there's a lot that could be done, there's also not a lot that we can do with the budget that we have here. And I wouldn't want to take away from some of the projects that I think are really critical for access to the school, especially for kids walking, you know, walking and biking to school. But I did want to make sure that everyone was aware that that is something that came up and that resonated through from the, from those neighborhood meetings. People were actually pretty open to some pretty radical ideas on Pond Street. So we can't do it as part of this project. We are going to be able to do some light touch things. We're going to look at the kind of the curvature of the road right by that crossing, um, do some maybe marking, some feedback signs, maybe some flex posts, things like that, um, but more like low cost, high impact solutions to start. But I want to make sure that, you know, the board is aware that that's something we're not going to be able to address as part of this project. So I guess just walking through the few of the other things that we've done here, um, we have done a site walk where we field confirmed, um, all the land survey that we received, um, from our sub consultant for the area, uh, where all the projects are going to be, um, truth testing the concepts, as I mentioned, updating the cost estimates. The good news is, is that we ran some numbers, you know, we do, didn't do a full run, um, but the costs are not increasing, which is a good, good story to tell. Um, and we did a site walk with EPW Engineering, Planning, uh, Police and Fire. And, uh, with the fire department, we're actually going to lay out some of the curb extensions that we're thinking about doing with, uh, barrels, which we did at Cross at Holton. And we'll just kind of field confirm some of those turns are appropriate for the shot, fire chief before we move forward with anything there. So yeah, revision so far, this is just a quick list, um, but really I wanted to acknowledge the desire for, for traffic calming on Pond Street and improvements at the crossing. So we're going to be looking at some improvements at the crossing, see what we can do there. There's a desire for traffic calming along Canal Street, so we've got some speed humps potentially going in there, which, uh, which makes a little bit more sense in terms of the school access, given that, uh, kids are crossing at Middlesex at Canal quite a bit. Um, Sylvester and Middlesex, uh, I guess what I said before about the cost, um, estimates not really increasing, part of that is that we're backing off and changing some of our designs, um, based on the land survey. What we found was some of the raised crossings that we were talking about are going to be cost prohibitive. So we're switching to improving the ramps and then providing kind of speed humps on either side of them, which is a lot, uh, lower impacted, lower cost. And resizing the curb extension at Horn Pond Brook at Middlesex, which I heard from a few people that it was a little bit overdesigned, uh, for the impact. Yeah, so next steps, we're going to be keeping going forward with the engineering design through the winter. Have a submission early in the year. We'll come back to the neighborhood and the select board, um, early in the new year and have everything pulled together for revised cost estimates to bring to spring town meeting. I'm happy to walk through all the individual designs if we want to go through that, um, but you have all seen them and there hasn't been a lot of changes since the last time. Okay, thank you.
Can I ask a, um, just a question to, to Beth and to Matt around Pond Street? Cause I was able to, to listen in to those and I know on Pond Street, there's, um, there's also just concern about the Pond Street truck usage.
We've talked about this.
And so I've noticed, uh, so Pond Street specifically, but also kind of in other spots that there previously were no truck signs that are no longer present.
So, yeah, go on.
So I, I was just going to say, you know, I have looked, in order for, uh, a road to be officially have a truck exclusion, it does need to get review and approved by Mastot. Mastot maintains a list of truck exclusion routes. There was some discussion about Pond Street perhaps having had a truck exclusion or, uh, Lake Ave and Woburn having a truck exclusion. Um, neither of those streets are listed with Mastot as a truck exclusion route. We are hoping to talk to Woburn and just see if, you know, they had a sign up. Well, the, we, you can look on Google and you can see that there was a sign, but to see if there's any history or if there was unofficially a sign up. We haven't found any evidence for the Winchester side of ever having a, a truck exclusion sign up.
When I was town manager, we went back through the old images that we, we had before the intersection was reconstructed and, uh, as far as I could tell, there wasn't ever a sign on that end.
I do think it would be very difficult for us to pursue an official truck exclusion route just because it crosses the town, town line. You have to have, uh, an alternate route. And, you know, people may know that Wildwood Street and Palmer Street are also our, our official truck exclusions. So we would have to figure out where are these trucks going if we're not allowing them on Pond Street. And there are a couple of other, uh, criteria that Mastot would be looking at. But we're continuing the conversation and just, you know, checking in with Woburn on that.
Yeah, I would just add that in speaking with Matt and Beth, um, I, I wouldn't, on the surface, I wouldn't recommend a truck exclusion on Pond Street. I'd be pushing, the alternative routes are really going through like town center or, or through Woburn, which is your, essentially asking Woburn to take all your truck traffic. So, um, there's some challenges with, if you look at a kind of regional map, um, of a struck, truck exclusion on Pond Street.
So I think just, um, in terms of timing, um, you know, we're, we're working as quickly, as quick as we can to get these construction cost estimates together so that we can come to, go to spring town meeting. But I think we'll probably need to come back to the board next spring, ahead of town meeting so that we have a concept plans that you guys are voting on. So when we go into, or it'd be more than concept plans at that stage.
We'll have preliminary engineering, um, early in the new year.
I think we just want to make sure when we go into town meeting that the board has kind of reviewed and is comfortable with the fi, these finals, close to final projects that we'll go forward with. Cause I'm sure there'll be a lot of questions about the projects at town meeting.
What will, um, I see on, uh, one of Erica's earlier slides, we have the neighborhood update in the spring. But what about just in general, like a Lynch update? Would that come post-design?
I think you, did we have, we had a meeting with the P, PTA that was, I don't know if that got scheduled?
Yeah, they ended up, um, we were struggling to, to schedule it. Um, they were struggling to get me in their calendar. And we ended up sending the slide deck, um, and just, I said, anytime you have any questions, feel free to reach out. So that's kind of where we left it, was just coordination on email.
I think this would be, once there is also that, like, much closer point to, um, make sure it's sort of outreach and inclusive of, of Lynch and folks being aware of that.
Yeah, I think, so for what we've done so far for the two meetings, we've done, um, mailings to the neighborhoods, but we could make sure that Lynch, the school is actually sending the meeting invites out to people. So it's, because obviously there's, the Lynch district's bigger than just the immediate neighborhoods that we're sending the invites out to. Yep.
Any more? Thank you Erica.
Thanks Erica.
Thank you.
You're on the right track. Thanks Matt for coming in.
Have a wonderful Thanksgiving.
You too.
Thank you.
Uh, next up, Housing Production Plan Resident at Large Selection Process.
So as, as you all know, um, we're moving forward with the updates to our housing production plan. We have our first meeting scheduled, uh, for an advisory group on December 13th. And so I've, um, in your, in my memo to the board, there's a list of the boards and committees who'll be participating. I've reached out to each of those folks to, to have a representative appointed. But in, in addition, we, we included, um, two resident at large positions. And so the question is how we want to select those folks. We could, you know, put something out on the website, um, have people respond with an interest and the board could interview them at your meeting on December 11th if you wanted. You could delegate that to me to select people, whatever your comfort level is.
Anyone?
So we should, I mean, I suggest as we follow the same process we do.
For everything?
Yeah. I think that's.
I don't know, I always get named to a committee at a meeting of the select board. There's like big names and people on the committees. So that can be fun too.
And then you're the chair.
Congratulations, year two coming up.
But I think a more, not, not the surprise to the person would be a good idea. So whether that's you Beth, or we advertise, maybe it's just advertise like we ever need to gauge interest.
I guess just my only concern with advertising is it's a tough time of year with, you know, busy time of year. And you said December 13th.
Yeah, I mean, we have to get the word out somehow. So, um, unless we as a group can think of people that we want to reach out to, to, to be part of it, but I think we have to advertise in some, because we're obviously not going to pick the same, pick people who are already on the Housing Partnership Board or something else, right? So we have to kind of get the word out, just the selection, do you want to come back to the board for an interview process? Or, you know, you could delegate it to me, uh, whatever, or you could delegate it to a smaller group of the select board, whatever your comfort level is in terms of the process.
I'm curious from, um, I'm now into like the whole naming two people idea to get you some folks for the 13th, but someone, part of me thinks someone who like lives downtown or works downtown, since a lot of our, and so it's two things related, kind of North Main Street and MBTA, right? A resident of Main Street or thereabouts and potentially a resident who has just shown up to a lot of public hearings that isn't necessarily representing a board, but they're shown, they've shown an interest in, you know, joining Zooms or being there in person around the North Main Street, MBTA zoning or future, and, you know, other planning board meetings. Cause if they're that interested to show up, they clearly are interested in the outcome of our housing development.
What do you think about a developer?
A developer? The developer? I like that idea.
It'd be interesting, yeah. You get someone's speed dial?
Do the interview right now.
Okay, a resident of Main Street and a developer. There you go.
Sorry. Just a minor family emergency going on, but, uh.
We'll take sausage and onion on that. Now I'll be home.
I wish it was that simple.
My. And just in terms of a developer, I mean, would that be a developer with X experience in affordable housing? I think looking at the boards involved here that, that, you know, be interested in it.
Well, what I.
Leading that way if there was.
What I see in this, these boards are people that, you know, I don't see anybody that's in the actual construction industry and building. I think that's a perspective that, you know, is it easier to do, you know? Again, I'm spitballing and like I said, it, it, uh, there's a lot going on, but it's, you know, duplexes versus mass scale, you know, projects, you know, know the market, you know, know the, you know, stuff like that.
Available with financing, all those.
Yeah, exactly. Just somebody who's in the game, I guess is my point. I mean, we all like to moonlight as developers and things like that, but somebody who maybe is in the game.
Truly understands the cost too.
Right, exactly.
Yep. So that's a couple of profiles of people, not that I have any.
I mean, I, you know, I mean, I, I'm, look, I'm, again, I know there's some residents that work for like, you know, Moriarty is one company. I mean, you know, some, like, somebody maybe from there, um, you know, someone from Cummings. I'm trying to just think of big developers, um, you know, I. Maybe there's a network we can put a request out to, um, and reach out to a couple of people and see, you know, if there's anybody. I mean, it's just my thought. I mean, it's maybe one resident that way and then one person. I just, I just don't see that interest represented on this, in this breakdown. I think we're going to get a lot of people that, you know, you know, from the planning board, Affordable Housing Trust, Housing Partnership Board, you know, they, they have that institutional knowledge about, you know, the process and, and, you know. But I think someone boots on the ground and actually builds would be helpful.
The other thing is we could try to find somebody who is actually in an affordable unit. So we do lotteries for, uh, John Caffrell runs the lotteries for affordable units. We have, you know, a group of people we could, um, reach out to if there's an interest in getting someone up from that perspective to represent. And obviously anybody can, these will be public meetings, so it's not, you know, no, nobody will be limited, um, in attending.
Yeah, people on wait lists for, uh, affordable housing lotteries. That'd be interesting too. I'm not kidding. I mean, they, they like a unit, they let you in it. They might be, they're downsizing somewhere else. Like what, what is it, it's kind of Rich's point. What's the kind of options you'd like to have? What are the kinds of units?
Right.
And where would you like them to be?
Do you guys feel comfortable with maybe giving Beth some authority to try to?
Yes.
Find some people that fit this? Not that you don't have enough to do.
Big shoes to fill, but yeah.
I mean, it doesn't necessarily have to be you, but staff, you know, working with staff to maybe identify some, some people.
Yeah, here's five or six names.
And just another thought, not to make it more complicated, so, um, is that I know there's also folks, um, in town who have worked on the sort of state side financing of affordable housing, who might be, um, sort of, sort of similar vein to, to developer in terms of understanding, you know, big picture what's.
All right, so maybe, do you want a consensus or a vote from the board or?
So I guess, do you, are you delegating the authority for, to select to me? Or do you want me to bring you a group of folks that you would interview? Or a subset of you would interview?
I'd like to bring me some names, just speaking for me. With maybe having done some vetting, as in they've showed a minimum of interest and they'd be.
Yeah, they're willing to do it, you know.
And I don't necessarily care to interview, but I would at least like to see if there's five or six candidates, which we get to pick two. That's my sense.
If we can get that many.
So you just want like, like a, an explanation of why they're interested as opposed to a, a personal interview?
Yep.
And then we would look at that on the 10th. We have one week we're not meeting.
I don't think I could get anybody between now and next Monday.
If you could, I'd be suspect of those meetings.
Why would they answer your call?
All right. So let's do that. Is that good? Is that enough instruction, Beth?
I think so.
Okay. No update on CPA, just consent agenda?
Not since last week.
I'm just going to keep putting it on the agenda, but if we want.
Yeah, no, that's, that's great. I'm just, you know, nothing has happened since town meeting and I, I immediately left for Pittsburgh.
All right. Do you want to just devote the consent agenda as printed?
Yep. Uh, move that we approve the consent agenda as printed for November 20th, 2023.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes. Um, I think that's everything, right? Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. Well, thank you, WinCam. Uh, have, everyone have, hopefully they have a healthy and happy Thanksgiving. A good Thanksgiving to all of you.